I call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Could we have the roll, please?
Nelson?
Here.
Boone?
She was just here.
She was here. Ramsey?
Here.
Bazard?
Here.
West? Coulson?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Mayor Burke.
Hey, this evening, we are going to discuss personnel items. And the first thing on the agenda is direct consideration and discussion of budget projections and future staffing plans. Who would like to start?
I'll start with a few comments and then turn it over to Bill. First of all, I want to thank the department heads for their cooperation, working with us and putting the information that you have in front of you together. And I especially want to thank Bill and Melissa for pulling this off in really good fashion. They worked very hard over the past month in the midst of continuing the budget and in putting what I think is a really good accounting for the council to consider. And we all know that we have budget constraints. We don't have, we have a levy cap that limits us to the cost of new construction each year, or the percentage growth in new construction, and does not allow for inflationary increases. So we know over time, that means that we will fall behind. And we are falling behind. You can see that in the charts that Bill and Melissa put together. We're falling behind. The question is, how much can we afford to fall behind without addressing the problem? And to what extent can we find the resources that are practical for our citizens to pay to keep up with the costs of maintenance of the city? So, we have, over time, tried to address new funding sources. We've had very, you know, we were slow to start relative to other municipalities. We've kept recycling and garbage on, under the general property tax base. Many communities, many years ago, took that off the general property tax base. And we've been stubbornly resisting doing anything like that. Last year, as you know, we, the council approved the referendum. It was approved for the public, or the, yeah, non-referendum, excuse me, the public fire protection charge. And that helped us to meet some significant personnel requests and requirements. Stormwater utility has helped for projects, but not for personnel. And that's something that we should discuss a bit more. About the only thing that we haven't tried is either taking garbage and recycling off the general fund property tax base, or passing a wheel tax. The City of Madison's currently, I think, under consideration tonight for a $40 wheel tax, and an operating referendum. And we have seen around the state, many other operating referendums. They range from very small numbers to more significant numbers. So we'll get into a bit more of that, but I'll pass it off to Bill and/or Melissa to go through the presentation.
Thank you. And included in your packet is a brief presentation, as well as the information for the staffing plans themselves. And within the staffing plans, showing both what the department requests were and the costing out of that, and then an administration-proposed scenario to try to look at balancing those needs, and also trying to look at what might be a reasonable number to support all those still large numbers. So we thought we would go through the presentation, provide some context and background for the discussion tonight, and then open it up for the discussion among the committee. And we have several staff here, as well as the three of us, to answer questions. So we'll go through, in the presentation, a little bit about the budget context, summary of the staffing plans themselves. We had a few policy questions that we wanted to highlight for the discussion, and then some thoughts on revenue options available to the city. Looking first at the budget context, this is a similar graph to what we've been showing in the budget materials every year, where we look at the equalized tax rate based on equalized value for the different cities and villages in Dane County. And Middleton compares very well, and has for several years. We're in the bottom third or so of the municipalities with an equalized tax rate for the city of just under $6 per thousand. On the high end, we have City of Madison at about $9 per thousand. And when we look at communities that are probably most comparable in terms of staffing and services, Fitchburg and Sun Prairie would be a couple examples, both with higher tax rates. The ones that are smaller tend to be villages. We have the City of Verona that had a large reduction following the closure of their TIF district for Epic, but I think Middleton has compared fairly well. The challenge with levy limits is that historically Middleton has had a low tax rate, and has been limited in the ability to grow its property tax base because of those levy limits. If we look at staffing trends, and a lot of the information in the plan looks at staff and full-time equivalent employees, and looking at full-time equivalent per thousand population. We know that this statistic, and with all the other statistics that are in here, there's no one good measure that captures the full picture of everything. And certainly Middleton is somewhat unique compared to a lot of cities and villages, and that we have a very large employment base and non-resident daytime population. But still, for historical and comparison purposes, we thought that this is an important measure to show. And looking at this in total for the city, the city has added staffing over the last 10 years, and that's reflected in the blue bars. Also during that time, though, you see kind of a steady, slow decline in FTE per thousand population. And it's not a huge trend, but definitely, over time, starting to see that slow decline because of the revenue limits. Wanted to talk a little bit about levy limits, because that is probably the single largest factor that's driving the operating budget for the city, and has been for many years. And I think it's important to step back and look at some of the history of the levy limits, because the trend, since they were imposed in 2006, is that they've gotten more and more restrictive over time. Levy limits were first applied in 2006, and at that time, the limit was based on net new construction, or the percentage change in net new construction, but there was a floor in place, so that if your net new construction was low in a given year, you would at least be able to grow your levy by a minimum of 2%. And then over the next several years, with different budgets, the floor was raised to as high as 3.86% for one year, and varied between 2% and 3.8%. In 2011, that minimum floor was removed, and we are seeing the effect of that now with our current budget, where we're looking at net new construction of about 1.7%. So we're not even able to grow by that 2%, which is about where the rate of inflation is. In 2013, there was a state bill that was passed that restricted the levy limit further to say that if you increase a certain number of fees, that you had to have a negative adjustment to your levy limit. So for things like refuse collection, if the city were to impose a fee for refuse collection now, without a referendum, we would need to reduce our levy by a corresponding amount. And that also applies to stormwater and some other service areas, to really kind of limit what your options are outside of the property tax without going to referendum. And then in 2017, there were several adjustments included in the state budget. There was a narrowing of an exemption for debt issued prior to, it says 2015, I think that actually should be 2005, I apologize for that. There was a change that allowed for public fire protection fees to be increased without doing a referendum, and this is something that the city did take advantage following that change in the state law. And it also clarified and established some limits on if you were to do a referendum to exceed the levy limit of a specific timeframe and specific wording of what that referendum means to look like.
So Bill, could you explain narrowed adjustments for debt issued for?
Yeah, there used to be a provision for debt issued before a certain date, and I actually think it's 2005, and this is a typo in here, but that debt would be allowed to be base building, so that if you were calculating your levy limit, you'd have the amount for the debt issued prior to that date. And then each year, when you're doing your calculation based on net new construction, that amount would get added into the base. That has now been changed, and also for debt issued after that time. It's a dollar for dollar. So the city has an exemption for debt, but when that debt is paid off, that exemption completely goes away, and it doesn't add to our base. So a couple of the impacts of having the levy limits in place for the past several years. First of all, with the removal of the floor, there is effectively no way that inflation is factored into the formula. It's strictly based on net new construction and net new construction only. And with no inflation factor, what's happened in practice is, as our costs go up, and staffing costs, and just general inflation in the economy, we're forced to use our net new construction to help cover those inflationary increases. And looking at the time since levy limits were imposed in 2006 to now, inflation, according to the CPI, has gone up by about 26.5%. And that has all come from our net new construction growth. And in effect, although the city has been able to add some staff and make some increases in line items, a large portion of that net new construction growth has gone to inflationary increases, and that's really limited what's been available for new staffing, or to continue to maintain the service demands of a growing city.
Does everybody understand that? Because that's pretty complicated. I'm only asking because I'm on the Personnel Committee, and like Sam hasn't had, my husband hasn't had an inflation raise since 2011. And that doesn't seem like a big deal, right? But it kind of is, because like my utility bill is going up, and my water bill is going up, and my property taxes are going up, or whatever, but we're still dealing with the same thing. And we've added a kid in the house. So not really the same thing, but you can feel it 10 years later. So you guys, you're keeping up, because it's pretty complicated. Yeah.
Bill, how much has our population increased since 2011?
I moved in.
The numbers in the report.
Plus one, or plus three.
It's on, towards the back of the packet. In 2011, the population estimate was 17,555, and the most recent estimate is 20,713. So about 20, or, excuse me, about 3,300 people during that time period.
So we've increased 3,300. Had no income coming in to cover inflation.
Right. Yeah, the net new construction has had to cover everything. It's had to cover inflationary increases, personnel cost increases, the demands of higher population and higher services.
Right. And just becoming a more efficient city. That's what we've had to do.
Yeah.
Well, until 2011, you know, you could adjust the levy by 2%, at least that was the base. So when you work out the inflation, you took 2006, could you maybe work it out since 2011 as well?
Yeah, you can.
It doesn't need to be needed now, but some states, so.
I did that, it was, it's about 14.35%. Yeah, I did that calculation yesterday.
Wow, look at this.
Well, just confirm that, Bill, because I, that's exactly what I was, I had the exact same question yesterday, and I looked online, but I could, yeah.
Sure.
Double check that. Mm-hmm.
So, looking at the net new construction growth for the city, then, that has varied quite a bit over time. It was lower down in the 0% to 1% range back following the recession. This chart shows the numbers since 2013, when it was just over 1%. We've been fortunate recently that we've had some high years, where it's been in the 2.5, and a couple of years at over 3%. And then in 2020, as you know, we're down to 1.7% with this current budget. And the average during that time period has been 2.2%. For a while, again, immediately following the recession, back in the early 2009, 2010, inflation was lower, but now we've seen inflation moving up and getting closer to 2% and very close to what our average net new construction has been. We also, as part of the budget, and I think we talked about this during the budget kickoff, have done projections, and we update these every year, where we look at current budget for revenues and expenditures in the general fund, and then make some assumptions going line by line for revenues, for what projected growth are, and then making some assumptions for expenditures. And for purposes of this, we're using property tax growth at 2.25%, which is similar to that average net new construction. Factoring in the TIF cost recovery, continuing to reduce that by 100,000 per year, so we know that that needs to be phased out over time. And then other revenues, like I said, we had looked line by line. So for certain state aids, we're assuming flat, no growth, because we've been fortunate to keep it at flat for many of those revenues. Other revenues, we might have a 2%, 3%, or in some cases, a 5% increase built in. But when we factor in that in total, and because property taxes is by far the largest revenue in the general fund, we're looking at for 2021 through 2024, average revenue growth of about 1.7%. It's a little higher in 2020, and part of that is the increase in the general transportation aids. I don't anticipate that that's going to go down in future years, but we also are not counting on similar large increases in future state budgets, knowing how challenging that may be. And then looking at the expenditure side, we're budgeting a 2% annual growth in wages, 2.5% on benefits. And then the operating, again, kind of looking line by line, a lot of them are based on a 1% increase, but some where we know there are higher cost trends, we've got either a 2% or 3% increase. In total, we're looking at, I'd say, average growth of about 2% on the expenditure side. And when we look at, showing that graphically, based on the budget recommended by the Finance Committee, we have a balanced budget for 2020. We're projecting that we'd be very close to being balanced in 2021, and we're starting to see small gaps appearing in future years. And in the scope of a 20-plus million-dollar general fund budget, these numbers which are shown in thousands, don't alarm me. I think that these are things that we could cover within our budget by making adjustments and tweaking things where we need to. But I guess the message I want to give is, we're looking at basically a cost-to-continue budget going forward without new revenues. That, you know, we should be close to be able to balance the general fund budget, but not looking at adding staff or adding programs within our current revenues. And where we've been able to add positions, or make changes in the past, it's generally been where we've had another revenue source, or a major increase in revenue. Something like the public fire protection fee, the big increase in general transportation aids that we have this year. We've had increases in interest income, but there aren't many of those options out there anymore, as we look going forward. Should add that these numbers are very dependent on what that net new construction growth is, because that is driving our largest revenue, which is the property tax. So we also looked at a couple scenarios, a low-growth scenario, not assuming that we go down to no growth, but if we drop from that 2.25% to 1.5%, then we're starting to see larger gaps showing up in future years, and projecting about a $500,000 gap by 2024, we had that level of growth over this five-year period. On the flip side, if we had higher-than-average growth, and we got back up to the 3% and had that sustained for the next five years, then we'd have some additional room projected in the budget, and that'd be getting close to about 300,000 in 2024. But, you know, given where we are, and where our net new construction growth is this year, I don't think we should plan on this scenario. I think that, you know, we'd at best look at the average scenario, but also need to be prepared that if the economy slows down, or we start to see a slowdown in construction, we may have some more years that are closer to that 1.5% to 2% growth. So with that kind of as context for the budget, for kind of where we're at, and why we haven't been able to do more with staffing within the general revenues, as part of this exercise, we were asked to put together, in working with the departments, what do they see as their needs based on current population, and where they see the city's growth in the future for future staffing, and then putting together some scenarios for what that could cost. And if we look at the staffing plans that are provided in your packet, if we add up all the department-requested positions over the next five years, it's a total of about 36 full-time equivalent positions across all city departments. The administration plan looks at trying to scale back or phase in some of those over time. That brings it down to about 29 full-time equivalent positions. And I should add, as a note, that both of those include going to a third fully-staffed ambulance crew in 2024, mid-year 2024. That's seven positions in and of itself. For costing purposes, because that's such a large piece, and because it's in the final year of the plan, we do show that, the number with that, and then we kind of show a reduction there to show you what the cost is without that major piece, just to get an idea of over the next four years, before we get to that final year of the plan, what would the cost be?
Can you tell me what the current number of people are now? Because if you want to go up by 29 to 35 positions, is that like a 10% increase?
It's one.
Yeah, we're at about 160, 170 right now. We've got the, a table in here that shows the exact number, but... When we looked at the costing for those positions, the department-requested cost is on the top here, and we've shown what the cumulative cost is each year. So if we were to adopt that plan and add that many positions each year, in 2021, we would need, in the general levy-supported funds, another 730,000, growing to 1.3 million, 1.7, and by 2024, 2.7 million dollars for the total cost of all the positions. And I should add that that does include the third EMS crew, because that was the total of all the positions that were requested. For the administration-proposed staffing plan, that is scaled back somewhat, and has a net levy cost, starting with 467,000 in the first year, going up to just 900,000, 1.2 million, and finally getting to about 1.8 million in 2024. So those are still large numbers, and to put that in perspective, that would be about a 10% increase in the city's total tax levy, to do that full 1.8 million. Couple of the policy questions that are kind of embedded in here, and we wanted to highlight for discussion. One is, should staffing for stormwater maintenance activities be funded with general property taxes, or with stormwater utility fees? Currently, they're funded with general property taxes. They're funded essentially through the public works crews that provide those services, and stormwater utility fees have been used for projects, but not for staffing. In the staffing plan that was shown, the Public Works Department is not requesting additional public works crew, but they are requesting two dedicated positions to do stormwater utility, or stormwater maintenance. And I guess the question is, should those be funded under a stormwater utility, or should they be funded by the property tax levy? In the administration-proposed scenario, we have them shown under the utility section, so we don't have that included in the 1.8 number. If you were to add those in, you'd add close to $200,000 in cost to that scenario, to fund those two additional positions. Second policy question, when should the city, and I guess how should the city seek to fund full-year Sunday library hours? The library-requested plan included 1.5 FTE to add year-round some Sunday library hours, to expand from the current hours that are offered during the school year. You know, question is, should those be included as part of this staffing plan? What would be the timing of that? Or should that be left off of this staffing plan, and address some of the other needs from the library or other departments, and then potentially address that with a future staffing plan, or with considerations of stamping a future library-community-campus plan? And then, getting back to the third ambulance crew, again, a question of timing and how that should be done. Should that be part of this staffing plan, or is that something that we should be aware of, but consider funding within a future plan, and/or with a separate revenue source? And part of the thought there, and why we didn't show that cost in the administration-proposed scenario, is that we know that that's probably coming at some point in the future, based on call volume, we don't think we're there today. EMS has shown it as mid-year 2024, as a guess of when we may get to the point in call volume and intercept activity that we need to go to that level. But if we're looking at doing something for funding in 2020 or 2021, given all the other costs, it may be hard to fit that in now, and maybe that's something that we address in a future plan a few years down the road. But that's a policy question, if we're going to do this. You know, perhaps there's also an argument to say we should do everything at once and include that in there. And then, finally...
For EMS, I just looked at the table, and they have bought, on the average, five calls per day. And it has gone up from four points, let me see. So five calls for two ambulances. So I don't think I will be too much worried about it, so...
Yeah, and probably the staff from the departments are maybe in the best position to answer some of the department-specific questions. I wanted to highlight a couple other comments on the revenues, and then we thought we could open it up for discussion, and also if there's questions for departments, then staff in each of those areas can help address the questions as well. Just some other thoughts about revenue options. As Mike had indicated, you know, we've done several things over the past few years to try to improve our revenues, and that's, to a large degree, what has helped us fund the position increases that we have made over the last few years. And some of the things that we've implemented, or are in the process of implementing this year, the city had increased the room tax to 8%. That's now at the maximum level that can be charged under state law. We implemented plan review fees for building inspection. We made the adjustment for public fire protection fees that was implemented in the middle of 2019, we'll have the full impact of that in 2020. In addition to helping with some staffing areas, that also has allowed us to fully fund our fire and EMS capital reserves within our general fund budget. And there's the levy limit adjustment for TIF subtraction, which is something that we've talked about, and we've discussed doing a subtraction in 2020, which would give us some additional revenue in 2021. And the plan, or the concept that we've presented for that, is that might be a way to help with that phase out of the TIF cost recovery. Wouldn't have to be used for that, but we do know that by 2025, we have to have that fully phased out, and reducing it by $100,000 per year is still going to leave us about six, now about $600,000 in 2025. So we will need something to help fill that gap, and this might be a solution for that. With those, if we look at what other options are out there, there aren't very many. As Mike indicated, one of them is a wheel tax. We have about 21,000 vehicles registered in the City of Middleton. You can set the fee at whatever level, and Madison is looking at $40, which would be the highest one in the state, I believe, at this point. We just picked 20, because a lot of communities have 20, that's probably an average number. That would generate about $413,000 per year. And by state law, if you impose a wheel tax, you do have to use that for transportation-related activities. The city could look at doing a special charge for refuse and recycling service. As Mike indicated, many other communities around us have done that. Because of the state law change a few years ago with levy limits, if we were to do that for refuse, which is the larger cost of the two, it would require a referendum in order to not have a reduction in our levy limit. Recycling, you wouldn't have to do a referendum, but typically, if there is a fee, you see them going together, and between the two, the refuse is the higher-cost program. And finally, the ultimate solution, I think, is if there really is a desire to increase staffing at levels, you know, close to, or as shown in the staffing plan, that would likely require a referendum in order to exceed the levy limit. Because of the change in state law, that would need to be done in November. We need to get our net new construction number in August, and the decision to do the referendum would have to be made probably somewhere between mid-August and September. But if the city is going to consider that in a future year, it would take a lot of planning and consideration and preparation, and that's part of the thought of having the discussion now. If the council wants to explore that option, you know, this would be the time to start looking at exploring that, and deciding what direction we want to go.
So you said a lot of communities have wheel tax. I know Madison is just trying to get that now. So what are the other cities around here which have the wheel tax?
I don't know, Dane County has a wheel tax at $28. I don't know of many other Dane County cities and villages that have done it. I know there's a list of others around the state that have. There's a list on the Department of Transportation website, and I can send a link out to that, of that, to everyone.
Not in Dane County, but outside. Okay, thank you.
So with that, that's the background information we had. We'd be happy to answer any questions about the background, or the budget context, or kind of the overall plan, and we have a lot of staff here that are available to answer questions about the needs that they see in their department, and the specific requests that they put forward.
So does anybody have any questions? Susan?
Yeah, on the wheel tax, since it can only be used for transportation, it could cover the fees that we're currently paying for, to Madison Metro, you know, for the bus service. Would it, would we be able to pay what we're currently paying for, in addition to expanding?
I think you could. I think that you would have to earmark this revenue for transportation, but if you were to do that, then that could free up levy capacity for other purposes.
That's what I was curious about.
Yeah.
So it would still be a way of getting some additional revenue?
Correct.
Do we have that much?
Do we have that much transportation cost that are outside of the capital budget? I mean, in other words, would we make?
Yeah, transit is over 400,000 itself.
Streets Department.
Yeah.
All the labor in the Streets Department would count for that, right? For maintenance purposes?
I think it could, yeah.
So it's a pretty broad definition? It's a pretty broad definition?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got a quick question. Bill, thank you very much, A, and Melissa, kudos to you as well for putting this together. There's some really great information on page four around how the tax rate in comparison. If you look across, not even just Dane County, but also maybe just the state of Wisconsin, are there similar communities that we tend to benchmark against in terms of not only just tax rate, but also other elements like full-time equivalent per 1,000, or, you know, the variety of metrics that go into a budget proposal? Or is there something that you kind of always kind of keep your finger on the pulse of in terms of what this community is doing, or that community?
A, do you want to start?
Sure.
I think most specifically, we look at within Dane County.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's where our colleagues, competition, whatever you want to call them, are located. So Sun Prairie, Fitchburg, and Bronin-Wanaki, I think, are the ones, Manona as well, that we look at. And we fare well within that group on the tax rate, and then we fare, I think, even better when you consider how many of them have taken garbage and recycling off the property tax and added other fees, maybe not wheel tax, but others. And stormwater utility, to a greater extent than we have as well. If you look around the state at other similarly situated communities, I would add in places like Marshfield, DePere, Greendale, they're very similar sized to Middleton. And Melissa and Bill, you can probably think of some others. But really, looking at comparisons, we pretty much stick to Dane County.
Mm-hmm.
Katie, you had a question?
Could you just expand a little on what direct billing for fire protection means?
Sure. Something that the city has implemented in 19 and 20. Public fire protection includes the costs that are related to the water utility for fire protection. So hydrants is one of the most obvious, but in addition to hydrants, it's also the additional capacity and pressure that's built into the system to provide the water flow that's needed to fight fires. And under Wisconsin law, there's a couple of different options for funding that. It can be paid by the general property taxpayer, and up until recently, that's what Middleton was doing. So we had an annual charge where the general fund of the city paid the water utility for those extra fire, public fire protection costs. The decision that was made by the city a couple of years ago was to, or I should say, a year ago, yeah. It seems longer ago, but it was actually just last year and implemented this year, was to directly bill the water utility customers. So on people's water bills, they now have a line for public fire protection instead of paying that as part of the property tax levy.
Right. Thank you.
And if you didn't notice it, that's good.
We caught up on a couple of questions here.
Yeah, sorry, it took me a minute to find the transit number. I've gotten very used to using the PDF, so, but our payment or our contribution to NPO is just under 425,000. So in looking at the comparisons with the wheel tax, between that and then our activity with the street crews, it would be well over that.
So just to go further on what Luke asked, you know, early years when I was on the city council, we used to compare, I think, 10 or 20 other cities in Wisconsin of the same size. So if you were to go back 2008, '09, and '10, I think you would find what we used to do, and then I guess we changed, for whatever reason. So I think that's a good point to look at what is happening in other Wisconsin cities of the same size. It doesn't hurt. At least look at what we used to do until we changed. I don't know what the reason was.
If I could comment on that, I think the Dane County comparisons are much more real to us, because the factors in Dane County are such that we're all relatively speaking growing communities, and much of the state is not growing to the extent of Dane County. That doesn't mean that the rest of the state's not growing, it just means that we have higher growth rates here. The comparisons are relative, really, to other growth communities. There are a few other growth communities out there that we could add to that. And Mayor, what you're thinking of is when we were, prior to our having a classification plan for our employees, we did a comparison to those other cities around the state, some of which I mentioned, and I think that's what you were thinking of, in terms of pay. But, you know, with a growth community like Dane County, it makes sense to compare within the county. There might be a few others that we could add to that.
It wasn't just the pay, it was comparing everything, you know, police, fire, staffing, all of that. So I can pull it out and show it to you, but it was comparing them in every way.
Yeah, we occasionally get surveys from around the state, not with the number of employees, but pay in particular, and other growth factors.
Susan and then Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Actually, thank you for asking that question, because when we start comparing different cities, and Bill, you've alluded to this, but I think we need to keep in mind that most cities already charge citizens separately for garbage collection. That's a huge chunk of money. Another one is the stormwater utility fee. So five years ago, when we first did the referendum for it, the average, or the average range for stormwater utilities in Wisconsin was between $50 and $90 per household. We are at 15. So when we start comparing what our property tax rate is, we need to include in cost of garbage and stormwater extra. And I look at it, and we are doing incredibly well on keeping our taxes down and providing some really good services.
You know, I heard the comment about the wheel tax and how it'll bring, say, 400,000 in per year. How many FTEs would that be legitimately? And is that where the council wants to go? And the reason I say that is, if it's 400,000, it's probably six good full-time jobs.
I would say, just on estimate.
On, yeah.
I mean, depending on the range, we have a wide range of salary ranges, but I would say a really good number, there would be five.
Yeah.
When we factor in benefits costs.
Right.
So.
Right. So if we want to get towards 25 to 30 people to bring us up, and the reason I say that is, at least in my district, in the last year, we have been filling a lot of potholes, and now they're taking down trees, and they're putting up new trees, and the kids play at the park, and we see the police because they do wonderful work for us. And I'm sure there's fire and EMS, too, that I'm not seeing. But people are tired. Like, there was a lot of overtime last year. And I'm not saying I'm seeing it on employees' faces, I'm not. But I see those guys, like, literally, all the time filling potholes and checking my trees, and going at the park, and saying hi. And at some point, we can't get more out of them. And if you're looking at the wheel tax seriously, I got to tell you, I'm already hearing things about the little added utility fees. If we're going only for five, we're throwing down for that, we might want to just go out to the people and say, we need to pay people first. There's been a lot happening, and we need to be serious about where the growth of the city is. And I guess I'm interested in seeing that, the referendum, and what that would look like. And let our people, let our people hear what our staff does. Because I think when they do such amazing work, they never see them. And I think we need to see them.
Robert?
Let Bill respond first, something specific?
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to an earlier question. What was, what was our total current number of full-time equivalent employees? And that's shown in Appendix A, I think it's page 30 of the packet. It is rated about 170 right now between all departments. With the proposed plan, that would go up to about 199. And I just wanted to clarify that that includes funds with their own revenue source, so that includes tourism, golf course, depending on what the decision is about utilities. When you look at it department by department, some of the larger ones would be police and EMS, but if you look across all of our different city departments, a lot of them are going up one, two, maybe a request to go up three. But when you put it in total with all those functions and a couple of large departments, that's how you get to the total large number and large cost.
And in addition to that, we have about 199 full-time equivalents, when we add in the part times.
What was that again?
Right, current, yeah.
Hundred and?
Just shy of 200.
Shy of 200.
Full-time equivalents when you add in the part-time employees.
Yeah, and just to clarify, for the whole purposes of this study and the numbers and all the charts, this is just looking at kind of regular full-time and part-time employees, but not seasonals and LTEs, because that, you know, I think we wanted to focus on that core staffing versus seasonals, which could kind of, they fluctuate, and I couldn't inflate the numbers.
So you're saying my seasonal employees are tired? Not the full-time? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's an important part of the picture of our staffing, and I know a lot of departments have tried to do a lot for maintenance, using LTEs and seasonal staff. But just for purposes of this study and the graphs, they aren't in here, so that's why there's the difference.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, thank you. I want to wholeheartedly agree with the statement that Emily just made. I think, just looking at some of these additional revenue options, we have the wheel tax, which, one, it's a bit of a regressive tax, although you could argue that at least some people might not be hit if they don't have a car. But it's a regressive tax. It doesn't bring in anywhere near the kind of money we need for the type of additional headcount that we're looking at seeing in the future. And I agree with Emily that people don't like being nickelled and dimed to death, and I feel like that's what they're seeing between the fire protection fee that we did a year ago.
Year ago.
Year-plus, and then, you know, potentially throwing on a wheel tax on top of it. It just feels like we're nickel-and-diming. Then you go down to the special charge for refuse and recycling. Well, that requires a referendum. Like, I don't want to, I don't want to ask for a referendum that's not going to give us what we need, and again, that money's on a par, a little higher, but on a par with the $20 wheel tax. So then we get down to the big one, in my mind, the general levy limit referendum. I absolutely would say that that is where we need to spend our efforts today and going forward, and we have a very limited window if we want to get this implemented potentially by November 2020, because this is all about education, it's all about how to get the information out to our constituents, to the city in general, to say, this is important, here's why it's important, here's what happens if we don't do this, and here's what happens if we do do this. And I think that's going to be huge. So that's, that's my pitch to say, I see the benefits of some of these smaller increments in tax revenue, or revenue options, I should say, but at the end of the day, I don't think they get us where we need to be, and I don't want referendum fatigue, which we're at serious risk of with school referendums and stuff like that happening, and I think the time to strike is now for being bold and trusting our constituents and the people in the city of Middleton to say, we will educate you, we will explain to you why this is important, and we have to trust that our citizens will make the right choice based on good information. That's me.
Bravo. Well said.
So following up on that, if the direction that we decide to take is to go to a general levy referendum, at what point do you start putting together, you know, I understand that you have to wait till August 2020 to get the new construction, but at what point do you start, when do we start to see what that would cost? What we would put out there for a referendum so that we can say to, you know, on your $100,000 home, which there are none here, but this is what it's going to cost you?
My thought is that if we do want to go down that option, or at least having that option available, that really, this is the time to start. Start thinking about what is the level of staffing that we feel that we need, what is the cost that we feel comfortable going to the voters with, and doing that planning process now and over the winter. I think you'd want to have your educational materials available, I'd say probably no later than spring, and plan on doing public education in spring and summer of next year. We've talked about that if we do go down this road as we start the budget process, we would probably do two budgets in parallel, one assuming a referendum passes and one assuming it doesn't. We would get to August, September, potentially have a resolution to authorize the referendum, and then, once the referendum results come in in November, you would know which of the two budgets to go forward with and implement, because we can't wait till November to start the budget process to see what the result is. But I think now is the time to be starting the planning of what that's going to look like, and the final resolution may be later, but there'll have to be steps along the way to say that we're going to go this direction and start the process.
But for illustrative purposes, we'd have two budgets.
I think so, and I don't think that's too difficult to do. We would probably have a base cost-to-continue budget, and then we would have a budget assuming a referendum passes, based on the staffing plan that's agreed upon.
I had a question about the EMS and the putting on the, of the third ambulance in 2024. At that point, is, do we look at a, and I think I read somewhere, a regional system? And if we do go to a regional system, then is, how, what are the mechanics of that? Is it kind of like the fire district?
Dan, thanks for reading my comments. Appreciate that. It is about a regional system. Steve has noted, I think he did in the budget process as well, that many of the outlying surrounding communities just don't have the staffing they need. And so what happens is there, that increases our intercepts, our paramedics going out and getting people from those other communities, and it's become a dire need in some smaller municipalities out there. I don't want to name names right now, but Steve has had some discussions, and I told Steve I would start meeting with administrators from other communities as well to talk about these, these things, if they're willing and interested in doing so. For some, it could be, you know, a matter of pride and staffing their own community with volunteers, and it's very difficult to find volunteers for many aspects of our society right now. So that's a big part of it. The other part is our growth on the northeast side of Middleton. Now, it may not be as much as we anticipated, because the county's purchased the acre farm, because Community of Bishop's Bay, at this time, it's not expanding because of the concerns with the utility costs by the developer. So that's one of the things mitigating against, you know, saying we're definitely going to do a third ambulance in 2024, and perhaps that is put off to a later consideration, whether it be a referendum or what have you. But the concept, as we've discussed it with Steve, is that there'd be more regional support, and perhaps we'd be the focal point of that regional entity. But we, we'd have to talk to lots of other folks about that. Currently, our EMS partners are Town of Middleton, Town of Springfield, and a portion of the Town of Westport. And so there's an established fee for each of those communities, and then, as you know, we, we have relatively high rates, so the folks who need the service pay for it the most, and essentially, each of those towns has an established rate, a set rate that they pay based upon a formula that we have. based upon a formula that we have. So if we expanded our partnership, that could create more revenues, but probably not enough to cover nearly what we would need for a third ambulance. Any other thoughts that you guys have?
No, I don't think so. I, I think part of the thought was, you know, there's a question of when exactly that would be needed, and a lot of it depends on what does happen in some of these other surrounding districts. Plus, there could be other revenues, and even if they don't cover the full cost, we maybe don't know today what the dollar amount is that's needed for that in the future. And I think Susan's had her hand up for a long time.
Yeah, I've got two things. One, go step back on referendum or taxing fees. I think we've got to think about, are we going to go to referendum every year or two years? Because without that ability to raise our revenue in term, for inflation, we're going to be in the same spot continually going forward. So in terms of education, we're going to have to explain that.
Oh.
And, and as we're growing, means we're going to have additional services that we'll need with the new growth. But the other thing, and this goes back to what the mayor said about, oh, five calls per day for EMS. Since I'm on the EMS commission, keep in mind, it's more like an insurance policy to be thinking of it in those terms. So what happens if we have three calls within the same hour? We're relying on Madison or somebody else to make that third call. And that's a really big, important thing.
Kathy?
Question, how the general levy limit referendum will work. It says must specify amount and purpose and can be ongoing. Would, do you start out with what you're going to need in 2024 and not use the full levy limit until you get to that point? Or how does it, because it's incremental?
We, Bill asked that question of Larry Beckler. The school district, which you're probably more familiar with in terms of referendums, is allowed to step up by law, so they can have a referendum that extends over several years to pay for their facilities. But the legislature, in its wisdom, has not given that ability to municipalities. So if we're going for a referendum, like Susan said, it would have to be, you do it every year or every other year, or you do a large amount upfront. And that's what, I think, Bill, when you said 10%, that's anticipating that if you did everything upfront, under what, that was our recommendation, right? It would be a 10% increase in year one that would continue.
But if you don't need the 10% in year one, and you don't, until 2024, you need the amount, do you just not spend it? Or do you spend, you know, if you, if it's approved, the highest amount?
Suppose you could put it in a personnel contingency if you did that, right?
Yeah, I think you could save it and earmark it in an assigned fund balance. You could potentially use it for non-ongoing costs, perhaps substituting capital that would be paid for it. You wouldn't want to use it for things that have an ongoing cost, because then you wouldn't have the funds available when you need them.
But you need to collect it every year or that same.
Yeah.
You need to collect it.
Yeah, the way you would, you would do it, and using the scenario of November of next year, is you would specify that with the tax bills going out in December of 2020, that we want to levy this additional dollar amount, and you would need to collect that dollar amount each year. So it does make the timing or how you would structure that a little more difficult, because you can't structure it to phase in over a three or four-year period. You'd have to decide when you want to do the referendum and have that full impact on the taxpayer that year. So you either have a large single impact, or you're potentially doing multiple referendums over multiple years.
Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah. And Bill, this is for you. So, you know, if we have the referendum, we would have the certain amount of levy, but we don't have to, you know, tax that whole levy limit. You remember in the past, we almost never taxed the, the limit which we had. It's only recently that we went up to the limit. Could you not do that under this scenario?
Well, your future levies are going to be based on what your actual levy is. So if you had a referendum pass that, you know, using the numbers here, would allow you to increase your levy limit by 1.8 million. Say you would decide to only do 1 million instead of the full 1.8. The next year, your levy limit base is going to be based on that 1 million that you actually levied. So you'd have lost that extra authority for the 800,000 unless you did another referendum.
That's something, because in the past, you know, there was a certain amount of levy which you could do, and we never really, really went up to the limit. And I think in Madison or some of the other cities do the same, but they can re, they can increase it in years later. That was my understanding. At least I would like, you know, to be explored and checked if we could do that or not.
Yeah, there is a, there is a, a small adjustment, if you're not fully utilizing your levy, that you can have a portion of that carried forward. But generally, it's, if you don't use it, that is lost. And I think that's part of the budget discussion over the recent years, to recommend that we go up to the full levy limit to preserve that base for future years, and knowing how, how constrained we are. And it, there may have been a legislative change somewhere along the line with those different years where there were adjustments, and I can check into that some more. But you generally don't have the ability that if you are choosing not to go up to the limit, that you can just roll forward that full amount into the next year.
Susan?
Yeah, Bill, something that might be helpful for all of us is, the state sends out every fall a form on how you calculate the levy, and let us see that information. I know we've seen it a couple of years ago.
Can you maybe clarify what, what you're, are you looking for like the, what the levy limit calculation is?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I think that would be very helpful for everybody.
Yeah.
What do you, or send out in terms of?
Well, if you want to look at page four, and, you know, we have gone through many times where we've talked about there are other communities where the garbage and recycling is, you know, is not part of utilities. Could you just put in this table that these communities, they do and the others don't? So in that way, we have really clear pictures. So you could put plus, minus on the, on the left-hand side, you should have a garbage, recycling, and then just, you know, say whether they do or don't. And then also, since we have talked about stormwater utility, so if you could just give the numbers for various communities, then you really have a complete table. It really is helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Katie, you had a question?
Is it illegal for us on the referendum to ask if the citizens would be up for a minimum floor? Is that illegal for us to add in the referendum, to have that 2% floors go back?
Yeah, that's not, that, that's set by state law and how that's calculated, so we wouldn't be able to have a local referendum that would change that.
Okay.
Robert?
I guess my question is all, based on the timing. If we're going down this path, and I understand the constraints of, we're not allowed to even officially do certain things until we get numbers in August of 2020, and then it has, you know, and then for the November referendum. But obviously, if we know that we're going to be going down this path, if over the next month or few months, we determine, yes, we're definitely going to go down this path, we need to start advertising, marketing, whatever you want to call it, start getting people accustomed to the idea. I believe when the school district did it, they started like 18 months or two years earlier to, to really.
Three years.
Thank you. Or three years, if, for, for those of us who have poor memories that far back, apparently. I'm thinking, you know, by basically January 1st, we need to start having messaging going out to the city, or thereabouts. And I guess I just wanted to understand the, the state-imposed constraints about, you know, like you said, August, we have to wait till August to get some numbers, and then it can go on the ballot on the, for November. What are we allowed to do, even though we don't have the numbers from August yet, and even though we don't have an absolute commitment to do this in November of 2020? What can we do in November of 2019, December of 2019, January of 2020?
One of the things you could do as a committee of the whole tonight is to provide direction for what you'd like to see as a next step. One of the, you know, we've laid out a lot of information here. You may not feel comfortable with $1.8 million next year. That might take some time to, to develop as we talk further about this. But you could look at the numbers of staffing that are proposed here. You could determine what you're comfortable with in terms of that, and what we should be working toward in educating the public. If it's what we're recommending, the three of us, that's the $1.8 million figure, and whether that would be in 2020, or would that be in separate issues, 2020, 2022, perhaps 2024? So think about, you know, those kinds of policy options, the, the overall scope of staffing. Are you on board to ask the citizens to consider the 1.8 million, or the department's, what was it, 2.6 million? And, you know, that, those kind of scope issues. And then we could take that direction and refine it for public materials, educational materials. So we go out to service clubs, go out to various neighborhoods throughout the community, and start talking about that throughout the first eight months of next year, so that by the time you get to a referendum, you've already gone out and talked and got feedback from the community, can see where you might have opposition, where you're likely to have opposition in, in many cases. And then make a decision come August, how to proceed with the referendum. So, you know, I think, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I think you can do a lot of sculpting of that initiative now. What you'd like to see that would go to the voters, and there might even be, we've had optional referendums in the past, too, and that, that might be a possibility, but that can be very confusing.
Susan?
Yeah, I think we have a pretty, or you have a pretty good idea of how much we need. You need some final numbers from the state, but there's probably, you could give us a fairly decent range, you know, predictive range of what we would be in for asking. But I'd like to really emphasize, I know I've talked to a fair number of my constituents, because last summer when we had all the car thefts, I had people complaining about, why do we hire a sustainability coordinator instead of another policeman? And when I've talked to residents, I start out explaining, in 2011, the legislature took away the ability to increase the levy for inflation, and light bulbs go off and they understand it. Had several people say, I'm willing to pay more to hire another police officer. But that kind of information we need to get out. But in terms of actual dollars, I think we can do tons of planning ahead of time.
Bill, what's, if we were collectively as a group to say, yeah, let's explore the option of a referendum following tonight, is the hard and fast deadline for us, whether or not to put it on the ballot, is that August of next year? Or what, what is the kind of latest possible date we could say, kind of a go, no-go decision?
It would be sometime in September, and I'd have to check on the exact date, but I'd say it's around the middle of September, so there's time to get the ballots prepared for the November election.
Okay, great.
You have a pretty good idea of what net new construction will be, don't you?
Yeah.
I mean, I talked to Abby and, the other day, and we have 486 approved units coming on that, that are, we've approved, and we have 518 more proposed. So that, we must have some kind of clue as to what our net new construction is going to be.
Yeah, we have an idea based on the ranges and the permits that are out there, and especially once we get into January and our assessor is going out and looking at percentage complete on projects that are impartial, we'll have an idea. I, I think the way you would do this is if there's a desire to go forward, first determine what's the staffing plan and cost, you know, what's the scenario, what is the total cost? And then we can look at what we anticipate our net new construction is, and maybe have a low and a high. And that's going to tell you the number you'd be looking for in the referendum. You'd be able to get close, and then you would set the final number in August or September.
I would, would that give us a, could we have a range of options where, I mean, one of the things that we're going to want to do is, is know exactly what the impact is going to be to somebody's property tax bill. So, I mean, we have to be more clear as to what that would be. And I think that we would like to know, you know, how is this going to affect?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that the school district did very successfully was show people how much it was going to cost per $100,000 of property value, to get to your point exactly, Dan. So that, that would be incumbent upon us to put that information together so that we could educate the public, and then look at different options that you could achieve per, by cost. That's what you're, you're suggesting, right?
That is exactly what I'm suggesting.
Is that, is that a postcard? I think that was like a postcard.
There was a whole bunch of stuff. There was a postcard, it was a flyer, it was, yeah, there was a whole bunch of stuff.
The postcard's the one I remember, just so you know.
But, you know, I wanted to add, too, that there are some things that we haven't talked about here, but that we all realize. Climate change is affecting us in terms of costs of operating the city. So when you think about stormwater management and what happened to us last year, I don't think, you know, perhaps we'll have anything quite like that, but we're going to have continuous events that cause us to be uncomfortable with stormwater management over time. The opioid crisis, you know, it's been different crises over time. At one time, it was cocaine, methamphetamines, et cetera. Opioids have an effect on our overall public safety structure, and there's a lot of things happening nationally that we're not immune to. We've been, I think, relatively fortunate on our crime levels, because we have a very good proactive police department, you know, and you can't let your guard down. So being proactive, and that's true for all of our services, really. What you've done as a council is enabled us to hire really well, and we've got ample evidence of that in the room. That helps, and that helps us to maintain and be efficient with the resources we have. But we know things are slipping, and you can see that in the charts here. There's only, there, there's a limit to how much, how efficient we can be with given resources. So there are, there's always going to be things out there that affect us. Bill mentioned a potential recession. You know, if that comes about, then that puts a big dent in, in our services as well.
Yeah, I think something that we need to think about, we've been funding inflation with net new growth. But with that net new growth comes new residents, additional policing problems, recreation services we need to provide. So I think we need to be real careful in setting what amount we might want to go to referendum for, to take care of the increase in services that we need to provide with that net new growth. Not keep using net new growth as the way to cover inflation. Not keep using net new growth as the way to cover inflation.
So if I could just try to summarize, I'm sorry, Emily, go ahead.
I actually feel comfortable in exploring what you're proposing with the 1.8 million and taking that, and what does that look like? Now, I may not be comfortable as a property tax owner when I get that postcard, but I think we need to look at what that looks like. And, and the reason I say that, and, and I heard you, what you're saying. But if, if city staff has taken a look at the needs overall and they seem to be taking a middle of the road approach, and this is the long goal, and if we're going to fully staff city because of so many things that have happened and to be in a healthy place so we can continue to grow, I'm, I'm okay with going forward with that number. And I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think that we need to talk, have that conversation. And if people want it higher, or want it lower, then I think we should talk about that.
And with that in mind, if you have a community conversation, you may then make a decision next September that you don't want to proceed with the referendum or that you wanna proceed with a smaller referendum. Uh, but until you have that conversation, it's hard to know. And it, it would be, uh, something for us to undertake for the next year. And I think there can be a lot of good, just from engaging the public on a regular, consistent basis about that.
Robert?
Um, just a gut feel, would this be whatever number, let's say you do base some, uh, some, some numbers on 1.8 million dollars and, um, and then we break that down to what would that be for a hundred thousand dollar house or whatever the typical average is really in Middleton? Is that a scalable number? Meaning like, okay, uh, 1.8 million, 50% increase on that would be 2.7 million. If I just say, oh, if we really go, you know, ask for the whole hog and say 2.7, can I just take all the numbers you said, well, the, 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 the cost increase per hundred thousand dollar property was this amount, uh, multiply that by 50% and, or 1.5, uh, to get a new number? Or do we have to have, I guess where I'm going with this is, do we need to have you give us like 1.5 million, 1.8 million, 2.2 million, 2.7 million or something like that? Or can we just have you give us one number and then do the math ourselves to scale it up or down depending on how we need to do it?
Yeah, it, it generally would be scalable, um, and, and that would get very close to the number. And, and there's some numbers that we wouldn't be able to calculate until we get closer. But, you know, in, in rough terms, we can look at the 1.8 million is about a 10% increase in the city's levy would correspond to about a 10% increase in the tax rate. That would be about 60 cents per thousand. On a hundred thousand dollar home, that would be about $60 per year. That, that's ballpark, but that would be scalable if you do 2 million instead of 1 million, or, excuse me.
200,000.
Um, that was 1.8 million is, is the 10%. If you went up to 2.7, you'd look at what percentage bigger that is than the 1.8 and could scale that up. Yeah. So, I mean, I, if there's interest in, in proceeding, as part of the follow-up, and I've been writing down a lot of the questions, you know, that's something that we could do to say, based on the information and the projections of net new growth, this is what this could look like and maybe give a high end and low end range and give you that information.
Yeah, Bill, that was gonna be my recommendation, actually. So I remember from my involvement with the facilities planning committee within the school district is, we had, I think, about four different options of kind of bare bones all the way up to, you know, the most expensive. And then the other thing that I remember that was absolutely critical was, we conditioned or, or, um, had a survey done in the community and were able to kind of, almost through polling, kinda gauge the appetite in the community for what the overall limit, what they were willing to spend up to. And then that helped eliminate some of the various options and narrow it down as we got closer to that referendum or that kind of go, no-go decision. So, um, I'd be happy to, to share more about what was successful in that effort because I felt like that, there was a lot of things that were really, really well done in educating the public and also, um, you know, making sure that we were constantly in communication and understanding where the public was in terms of their appetite for, uh, a referendum.
Susan?
Yeah, I would, I'm still concerned about increase in population, especially the demand on the police force. And several months ago, I don't remember how long, when we were approving some apartment building, the chief got up and said, "We need to stop approving apartment buildings unless we can get additional staffing." And I would like to have input on the amount that we go to based on what they can really do with the pop, you know, with their current staff or how many more staff they need for this increase in, uh, population.
Wouldn't that be the requested that they have in terms of the 59?
I, I'm not sure. And keep in mind with net new growth, it depends on what kind of net new growth is. If it's another Fiskars or Meaden Hunt, that's not a problem quite so much. It is still employees. But if we're adding multiple apartment buildings, high density, or even houses, that makes a difference.
True.
Couple of comments related to that. For population, you know, that, I'd mentioned that the information is in the back here for what our population growth has been. For projecting forward and for all the charts that are in here, we assumed a trend line growth of population. Uh, over time, that's been remarkably consistent. And I think where we've seen a slowdown in single-family housing development, we've seen an increase in multifamily and the, the trend has been fairly steady. Um, I'd also remind you that population, it, it's one key number, but it's certainly not the only number. And as you point out, the type of development, um, types of services, where it's located, all of that plays a factor. And specifically for police department, I, I know they have their own staffing study that was done. I'm, I'm sure you're all aware of that, but, uh, you know, they, based on that study, were showing a total of nine positions that would be needed based on those metrics over this time period. The recommendation includes six and that's not a, a reflection that we don't feel that that's important. It's just looking at those numbers and trying to balance things and we were trying to keep to that roughly 10% total cost number. But I think those are discussions that need to be had of what is the appropriate number and cost that we wanna support.
That's what I'm asking, to get a discussion on that with the police department involved.
Ellen?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that I, I wanna say for the last two or three years, we were supposed to be adding police officers each year. If I remember correctly, we added a half of one in that time. So, and that's part of the reason why I'm talking about being open to going to referendum cause I sit on public safety and now when I look at the budget every year, I'm like, we're supposed to be adding so many and we're still not. And that makes me think, what are all the other committees, are they having these same discussions? And, you know, it's, it's a struggle because we, we do care about our public safety and, and the people who personally experience a lost car or a neighbor who loses a car, it's right there. But I'm also thinking about the flood last year. It was just exhausting for everybody to deal with it. And, and I have to tell you guys, when, when the flood happened and we couldn't run through the, the parks and the conservancy, we went to the library. So sorry, y'all, well, you guys are probably exhausted too. And, and so we have to come together. I did the math, it would be probably about $500 for my household if we went to the 1.8 million. And $500 would be very expensive for an average house, but mine's not average. So I, I think this is reasonable, um, not $500, obviously not. But, uh, doing the math, I think is the most important thing and having to move forward. I'm not keeping you to that number, did a quick guess. But, I mean, if you look at it, if we can add police officers in a healthy way and add staff so that we can have the services for a growing city, I think I can keep cutting coupons in my household and I can ask my neighbors to do the same and support good community.
I think there are a few things which would be, well, if you were to put together very helpful. Number one would be if you could have the state requirement about the dates of the referendum, that what's required, what were, we are supposed to do by what date. That sort of the schedule would be very helpful. And, uh, the second thing, which was that let's say if we go for a certain amount, if we can somehow put that money in some account where it's sort of restored or it's banked so that, uh, you know, we could, uh, we don't have to think about, uh, having a referendum often. So, so, so I think, uh, and then on page 17, you have this, uh, staffing related policy question, so, so it would be good that if you could somehow, you have three questions, but I'm sure there are a lot more. So if you could have a comprehensive list of the questions which city council need to decide before we move forward. And the last one is what, uh, Luke said as well and mentioned too, and the school followed it, that, uh, you come up with options and then with each of the options, you can more or less say, this is what you will get. These are the services which city would be able to add or provide, which are not there now. So, so option on one side and the services and what will happen, uh, you know, if it wasn't there on the other side. Because, uh, if you were to look at what school did, that, uh, you know, again, they said if you have this much money, we could have, uh, you know, this much of a building, we could have a expanded high school, but we couldn't have a middle school or we couldn't have a, so the same with optionality of services and the cost so that the people will know that, uh, you know, if they're voting for a certain thing, this is what they will get. Not only just, uh, addition to this, some would be, you know, just continuing, continuation of the services and the other will be adding. So, so I think that would be, these four or five things would be very, very helpful going forward, at least for me, so.
Robert?
I, I, I like that idea. Um, the one caveat I'll throw out there is if we get the money, I don't think this body here is going to necessarily guarantee we'll spend it a certain way because there'll be potentially a different common council, uh, in, in November of 2020 and beyond. So I think, I think it's good to give us ideas of where the money could be spent, but we don't wanna also commit that we will definitely spend the money here because we have to be able to be flexible, say, oh geez, based on what's happening in, you know, uh, January 2021, um, now we have, we had another rainstorm event or we need, you know, we're gonna change where we spend our money. But I think it is a good guideline for us. I just wanna be careful that we don't commit to the public that we will do this with this 1 million or 1.8 million or whatever the number is because we're gonna have to be flexible too.
Don't, doesn't, but doesn't the referendum have to explicitly state what the mo, what the money would be used for?
It, it does and we can, I mean, a lot of it's going to be things like individual salaries for raises and benefits and new hires.
Sure.
And that's a little harder to sell too, but.
Yes, that's a very hard one to sell.
Just a second. Bill, do you have a comment on that?
Oh, so we were just talking about the statute does require that you state a purpose, but I think that's gonna be a fairly general statement. It's not gonna get into, you know, this position in this year and that kind of thing. So there probably would be flexibility to shift, shift positions in and out and by year if priorities change.
Really?
So the, um, the rationale then could be as broad as just personnel?
Yeah, I, I would wanna look into that a little bit more if that could just be like, you know, general city staffing or, you know, I know some have done like public safety staffing with a referendum, um, but it's not committing to what the actual positions are that are included within that.
All right.
And do some more research.
This is from the school side. So again, memories, but I remember that we actually had to spill, split it out exactly X number of million was going for high school, X number of million was for the new school, et cetera. So there may have to be some level of detail that we provide rather than just simply saying, you know, public safety writ large.
And that could be for capital.
That could, yeah, that's a good point.
Capital, there is, uh, more of a requirement from a bonding perspective.
That's a, yeah, that's an excellent point, Mike.
They have an operations referendum.
Yep, yep.
I wanted to circle back on this, the first policy question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to like switch up things. How should staffing for stormwater maintenance be funded, other, whether it's general property taxes or stormwater utility fees? I just wanted to state that I am flexible, which may not be popular, but because of all the things that happened last year, somebody has to actually get the stuff done. So I just wanna say I'm flexible and open-minded.
Emily, I could explain a little bit on that. When we set up the stormwater utility, we did it with a very small amount of money and very different from other municipalities. So we only set it up with the referendum question for maintenance of existing facilities with the idea of projects. We did not put in there staffing and we didn't consider street sweeping.
But what is the language? Your intent may have been one thing, but after a flood of a thousand years, and I'm saying this because when I lived in St. Louis, wait, let me finish. When I lived in St. Louis, we had a thousand-year flood and within probably six or seven years, we had 200, we had two 500-year floods after that.
Okay, I'm talking, I'm talking about the initial referendum, five years ago. That wasn't for floods.
I understand that.
Okay, that's why I'm getting confused with the flood discussion. Cause I'm talking about, we set ours up very low and eliminated many of the things that are in stormwater utilities that other cities do, like street sweeping. That's a cost that most places include in stormwater.
If I may comment, we, um, we passed the referendum, so that money, that extra $30 that we charge is already spoken for. So that leaves $15. How much do we bring in with that $15? Is it 315,000 a year or something like that?
About 280.
About 280? So from a practical standpoint, if we're going to shift two positions to that, to that fund, then essentially we have $80,000 left to do projects. So from, from a practical standpoint, I, we'd have to go back to referendum. Correct?
I, I think, I think so. If you wanted to add staffing and still be doing the same level of projects or potentially taking on other projects, I, I think you would and perhaps you would look at when the referendum, the additional increase from the flood recovery referendum is coming off and then what's the appropriate level of funding going forward.
Yeah, for any increase, we have to go back to referendum.
I'm, I'm just saying that if we, if we shifted it from a practical standpoint, we'd have no budget to do any.
From a practical standpoint, you're absolutely right. To, but to address Emily's question, the way the ordinance was drafted is that you could fund personnel as well if you chose to do so. But I think the council at that time, and Susan, are you the only one that was?
I'm the only one here that was on at that time. Mark was the other one, but I chaired the task force committee.
And, and most of the council at that time felt, felt very strongly that they didn't wanna fund staffing, but we had it built into the ordinance that it would give you the option to do so if you wanted to. But as a practical matter, like Dan's saying, that would, uh, at, at least half of the annual budget would be taken by staff.
And we have to keep in mind also in terms of projects, we've been unable to do very many because it took time to collect some money, enough money to do something. And so we're a little bit behind on just our general maintenance of existing facilities of, in terms of big projects. Smaller projects like vacuuming the storm sewers, that comes out of regular public works and that's equally important and especially in terms of storms.
And that's why it would be helpful when Bill puts that table together along with the cities, you know, including the stormwater utility, how much they collect and what do they do, that would be very helpful. And I also wanted to say that I agree with what Robert and Luke said, that, uh, you know, you got to tell people when you're going to a referendum, what you're asking and what do they get. I mean, they have to know if you're asking, they're $500, what they're getting for it. So I think it would be very good that we explain them very clearly when we are asking for something.
So if I, and go ahead, Luke.
No, no, please, Mike.
I was just gonna try to summarize where we're at tonight. And, and that is, I hear a lot of, almost all of you making positive comments concerning putting an, an issue before. And that is, I hear a lot of, almost all of you, making positive comments concerning putting an issue before the voters. At this point, you don't know yourself whether you would support it. You'd have to look at it and see what the cost would be relative to the benefit for the community. But I, what I hear you saying is let's proceed, let's gather the information, let's engage with the public, let's prepare for a referendum. And then in September, if you've gotten the input that you like, you may decide to put that question before the voters and if not, maybe not. Is that a fair summary? Would everybody agree with that? So I think it would be appropriate for you as a community as a whole to make a recommendation as a matter of the record to show that you want to proceed along those lines.
I would like to add in the, we also need to seriously be considering adding the potential third ambulance. I mean, that was one of the, when we went to a second ambulance was one of the first decisions I had to make on council. Again, that was a big million-dollar increase in budget. And, you know, there was a lot of discussion and it's going to take a lot of planning about that and realizing the issues. And that was when we were going also, this won't be quite as hard as that one. We went from EMTs to paramedics, which was a huge increase in cost. But I'll also say, one of the more satisfying in a way things was not long after that, a man who had had a heart attack at the tennis courts and his family came in and thanked us. But the important thing was the statement of UW physicians told him, "Most people do not survive that type of heart attack unless they have it in the hospital." So when you realize these are decisions, yes, they're huge amounts of money, but you're saving lives. We need to keep that in mind. So I'd like to see us also, you know, four years is not that far off to start planning for that big an increase in expense.
And Mike, you said that you are planning to start discussions?
Yes, I do think that if we're doing both though, it's going to be hard to have that much time to dedicate to talking about a regional ambulance service.
Maybe start next year on the EMS?
We certainly can start. I just don't know that we'll have a really good idea by a year from now of other communities' willingness to move in that direction.
Right, I understand that. But putting it off to the very last minute is also not a good idea.
Right.
I think one of the questions which we may want to answer is that, do we think the paramedics, you know, in Madison are as qualified, are as good as Middleton? Or some of the other person with similar positions? Just like when Middleton does, goes to the other areas to help out. So if we want to work as a region, there will be, sometimes we'll be helping Madison, other times Madison would be helping us. So I like the concept where we look at it as a region and see what our needs are rather than having any preconceived ideas what we need. I think let's look at what Steve is asking, what Mike, you said, let's look at as a region. And I would think that the paramedics in Madison are just as good as ours are. I don't, I wouldn't really have any problem if it was an ambulance from Madison which came to help there or from Middleton. I think they're all well-qualified. I'm just saying that, do you want to go to UW Hospital or Mediter? I think they're all well-qualified people.
It's a little more complicated.
So let's look at a region, let's talk to Steve and let's see where we go.
Yeah, I just, I didn't, I don't want to raise your expectations that we're going to have an answer to this within a year because governments tend to work very slowly through these processes. When you think about us by ourselves relative to several other governments trying to make a decision and moving in the same direction.
And Steve's not planning on interacting with Madison. It's the town of Middleton and Springfield, right?
I think in the concept Steve was saying, we know that there's a greater need out in the outerlying areas that we could fulfill because there is a lack of volunteers in many communities to meet the basic EMT need. So that's, we need to talk it through, we need to have conversations. But I just didn't want to give you the comfort that we're going to have a proposal by next September.
But I'm not sure we should rely on using Madison paramedics as a solution to our problem.
Right at this point, the projection that Steve has given us though is that the call volume won't meet the need for a third ambulance until about 2024, correct?
He actually said more like '25, '26 or even '27. I don't think that's what he had heard, but I'd like to hear from his own mouth.
I mean, the requested staffing plan from EMS showed the need to go to the third ambulance and he had it mid-year 2024 to be implementing when you would go to that. So it's anticipating continued growth in call volume. And I think one of the big variables is how many intercepts there are for some of the surrounding areas. But that was his, when we asked him to put together his plan, that's the year he put down.
Robert?
We don't have to have everything decided tonight either. I think we were talking about maybe looking at a few different options and having you quoted a few different ways for us to look at this. And I would say, you know, right now, we can't expect, we can't guarantee any amount of income coming in from outlying areas to pay for this. So, you know, worst-case scenario, one of the options you look at is we don't put any money into that. Another option is we put 100% of the money in for that. And then we have two ranges to look at. We hope that someplace maybe 20, 30%, I don't know what the right amount is, gets paid by outlying communities if we choose to go this path. But at least we have options. And we say, look, we have an option for zero, which says, we're not doing anything along those lines. Or we have an option for what's worst-case scenario. So I guess I'm ready to make a motion.
Motion, the committee as a whole?
Yeah, you're making, you're acting as an advisory committee to yourselves.
I'd like to advise myself to remain quiet, but.
Or a preliminary vote, if that's what you want to say.
Sure. However it works, I guess my motion would be that I direct staff to go forward with the direction from council or the committee to assume that we're going forward with some type of a levy referendum potentially as early as November 2020 and that we get numbers to help support a case for or against that.
I'll second it.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Luke? To close the loop on something I mentioned earlier, I just did a quick search. And just so everyone's aware, actual language on the referendum, if indeed, which goes to, is actually mandated by law. And it's simply a cut and paste of, you need to provide the name and the municipality, the percentage increase that you're seeking, and the total dollar value to which that equates, whether this is going to be ongoing or one time, and then a short descriptor of what it's going towards. The example they said they gave in this thing was additional police protection services. So that's what would appear, should we choose to go down that path for the voters in November of 2020.
Anyone else? Second, all in favor?
Aye.